Good evening, I'd like to call the January fourteenth, 2021, meeting of the City of Norman Planning Commission to Order. Renee, may we please have the roll call?
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Williford?
Here.
Mr. Jean? Mr. Knotts?
Here.
Ms. Zink?
Present.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Bayhan?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. So for item number one A on our agenda, we have the election of officers for 2021. May I have a nomination for Secretary? Okay, the Chair nominates Ms. Williford. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Beck and a vote, please.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. May I have a nomination and a second for Vice Chair?
Can I nominate Steve McDaniel?
Second. Thank you, that was a nomination from Commissioner Williford and was it a second from Commissioner Bird? Thank you, and a vote, please.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and may I have a nomination for Chair and a second?
I'd like to nominate Erica Byrd, please.
Second.
Thank you, that was a nomination from Commissioner Williford, and was it a second from Commissioner McDaniel?
Beck.
Beck, sorry. And a vote, please.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Do we recess while we, while we, okay, we're going to take a brief recess and reposition. Okay, here we go. I'd like to remind everybody, if you can just identify yourself when you speak, like we did with the Zoom call, so for the transcript, we can, I, we know, especially since it's harder to hear. Going to begin with our consent items. We are, starting with item two, TMP dash one six zero, approval of the December tenth, 2020 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. Following by item three, COS dash two zero two one dash four, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Dillard nineteen ninety-one GST Exemption Trust, Dodson Thompson Mansfield, P L L C, for Dillard Estates with a variance in the twenty acre requirement for tract four, for approximately seventy-nine point nine zero eight one acres of property located at the northeast corner of Seventy-second Avenue, Northwest and West Robinson Street. And followed by that, item four, PP dash twenty twenty-one four, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Cinnamon Creek LLC, Ronald D. Smith for Cinnamon Creek Edition, for approximately five point six one acres of property generally located south of East Brook Street and east of Oklahoma Avenue, one eight one one Oklahoma Avenue. Followed by item five, COS twenty twenty-one dash seven, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by John R. Dollar, S M C Consulting Engineering Engineers P C, for Dollar Family Estates for approximately twenty-one point zero four three nine acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of Indian Hills Road and Broadway Avenue, five seven two five Broadway. Item six, PP dash two zero two one dash six, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Win-Win LLC, Grubbs Consulting LLC, for Win-Win Edition, for approximately one point one six acres of property located at thirty-seven twenty-four Classen Boulevard. And item seven, S F P dash twenty twenty-one dash one, consideration of a short form plat submitted by J. Jim Su Investments LLC and Bavani Properties, Brandon Holland, for replat of Section One Wyatt Edition, for approximately zero point zero one one acres of property located at southeast corner of Twelfth Avenue, Southeast and East Alameda Street. Does any member of the Commission wish to remove any items from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket, and if so, announce which items are being pulled to be discussed in their regular order? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
A second.
And if we can have a vote.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Moving to non-consent items, item eight, O dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. Larry and Joanne Clump request rezoning from A two Rural Agricultural District to PUD Planned Unit Development for five point zero acres of property located at twenty-four thirteen East Tecumseh Road.
And I need to recuse myself from this project, so step out.
Good evening Commissioners, Janaye Greenly with the Norman Planning Department. Larry and Joanne Clump are requesting a rezoning from A two Rural Agricultural to PUD Planned Unit Development at twenty-four thirteen East Tecumseh Road. This is the subject tract, and it is a two. Currently, there is a single-family home on this tract of five acres and a barn. It's an aerial, here's the existing house and the barn I just mentioned. Current access off to East Tecumseh for the house, and there is currently a access for the planned ADU. This is a picture of the existing house. This is the site where the ADU will be built, this is the access that will lead into that. That has been approved with the city traffic engineer. This is looking west on East Tecumseh. And east. And to the south. And that is looking on Twenty-fourth Street to the south and to the north. This request is for an accessory dwelling unit for the property so that the family can share with their parents. Daughter moving into the existing house, the ADU is approximately thirteen thousand, thirteen hundred square feet of living area with a six hundred square foot garage. It is currently designated very low-density residential in the Norman twenty twenty-five Land Use and Transportation Plan, but it does fit within the suburban residential growth boundary area of, and meets the requirement of not more than one dwelling unit per two acres. The family will occupy this house, and as it stated in the PUD, this property won't be, the ADU will not ever be able to be rented separately. Staff does forward this application and ordinance number O dash twenty twenty-one twenty-six for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
The applicant's representative is here to make a few brief statements.
I'll take the applicant presentation.
Dave Beck, nine twenty-two Schultz Drive in Norman. I am an architect that has been involved in designing housing that's accessible, and then that's my crusade. So when they approached me about the fact that they wanted to live by their family, but their house that they have is not accessible, we tried to figure out the best way to get them something. The term that, and there's two terms that are used these days, multi-generational and intergenerational, and this house would be considered multi-generational because of the three generations that would be living on the site. The house was designed to be accessible, the bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchen, entry, garage are all accessible, so Larry and Joanne can age there. And be supported by their family. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? I'd like to take audience comments.
I have one question. I mean, these, the existing house is on a septic tank, will that be enlarged or a new, new septic tank installed for the new house?
New septic tank.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Audience comments. And if you need to make a comment on this or any other item, just a reminder, there is a card to fill out, and please state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll go to Planning Commission discussion.
I just want to say, I have, we have had this situation in my family in a different state, and it was really, really wonderful, I will be in support of this, I think it's magnificent, and I would like to see more of it in Norman.
Agreed, I'd like to see more ADU, too. All right, moving forward, a motion, would entertain a motion?
I move to approve O dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
A second.
Okay, and I'll take a vote.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
I'm going to move on to the next items, nine A and nine B, nine A being O dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Norman Regional Hospital Authority requests amendment of the PUD Planned Unit Development, adopted by ordinance number O dash oh nine ten dash eleven for approximately thirty-five point six six acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of North Interstate Drive and West Tecumseh Road. And item nine B, PP dash twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash five, sorry, PP dash twenty twenty-one dash five, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Norman Regional Hospital Authority, S M C Consulting Engineers P C, for replat of the N R H Medical Park West, Section Two, a planned unit development for thirty-five point six six acres of properly, property generally located at the southwest corner of West Tecumseh Road and North Interstate Drive. And I believe we have a staff presentation.
I'm Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. So we have an application from the Norman Regional Hospital Authority, and they're amending the PUD that currently exists for this property that was for a larger portion of land, they're just amending for this thirty-five approximate acres. Let's see, and also the preliminary plat. So it is currently zoned PUD, this location map is the correct one, I think the one in your agenda packet included a little chunk that they're not amending at this time. And then the hospital is currently located here, it's surrounded mostly by offices, the red commercial pieces on the corner up to the northwest are some restaurants, and then there is a hotel to the south. So here we have an aerial showing as it exists today. This is looking north across Tecumseh. Here's south looking at the hospital. Looking east on Tecumseh and west. Here's the preliminary plat. And then the site development plan, they're adding a parking structure, they're adding on to the existing Healthplex Building, and then a cancer center, and I think an ambulatory center as well. And then the applicant is here with a presentation, so I'm available for questions, and we forward this request for your consideration.
Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll see the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Commissioner, my name is Gunner Joyce with Reger Law Group, the attorneys representing the applicants. And we have a pretty big team tonight, excited to bring this project to you, the Healthplex Campus Expansion. We've got S M C Civil Engineers, H G A and J H B are architects, and the design team, and also with Norman Regional, Richie Split is here, John Manfredo, Paula Price, and a few more, really thank them for taking the time to be with us tonight, especially during, you know, the pandemic COVID crisis, so we really value their time. I'll be quick, but just to give you a really quick overview about Norman Regional, they strive to provide for the health and wellness needs, not only of Norman, but the regional communities throughout South Central Oklahoma, and currently employ more than three thousand five hundred individuals and over three hundred and fifty physicians on staff. I'll hand it over real briefly to Richie Split to talk to you about Inspire Health and how that relates to why we're here this evening.
Thank you Commissioners, it's an honor to be here tonight, and on behalf of Paula, John, Troy, and Trevor, and the rest of the team, we are excited to be here and explain more about this amendment to the PUD. The mission of Norman Regional Health System is to serve our community as the leader in health and wellness care. Today, we are fulfilling, fulfilling that mission through the thirty-five hundred plus employees that we call healers in our health system, as they faithfully, compassionately, and tirelessly work to care for all types of patients through this pandemic, but especially those with COVID-19. So I'm very proud of their efforts, and I just wanted to take a moment to honor them tonight for the work that they are doing back in our hospitals. We will also fulfill our mission through the implementation of this bold and transformational plan that we call Inspire Health, as you see on the screen there. Inspire Health has five big projects. There are five of those, and I'll share them with you now. The largest of those five is the Healthplex Expansion, and as you probably recall, we've been before you before with the PUD for the Free Standing Emergency Department Plus in Southeast Norman. And the planning is in earnest and underway, and we're excited about that project as well. The expanded Healthplex Campus will continue serving as the regional destination for consolidated inpatient and outpatient services. It will provide easier access to the state-of-the-art technology and amazing healers who work there, and the health services that promote even greater health and wellness. And when we're finished, the result will be improved access, and it will include healthcare that improves our overall health outcomes for our entire community. For seventy-five years, in fact, this June, it will be seventy-five years, we have been providing that life-saving care to our community, and we're grateful for that opportunity to do that. And we think of ourselves as the preferred partner in health and wellness. So we're grateful to be here tonight as a public trust entity, serving to the benefit and in the public interest of those that we care for, and we truly appreciate that partnership with the city and many other partners around our community, and together, we know that together, through Inspire Health, that we will be transforming not only our health system, but our community, and we'll be transforming the landscape of healthcare in Norman and across central Oklahoma. So we're thrilled to be here presenting this amendment to the PUD for the Healthplex Expansion, and with that, I believe I'll turn it back over to Gunner, thank you.
All right, so a little more, the specifics of this project of this site, this is an aerial showing the surrounding uses, and then we zoom in here, this, this tract is approximately thirty-five, just over thirty-five and a half acres, and this is the Healthplex Campus. Overall, back in two thousand nine, there was a ninety-four acre PUD that was approved, so we are amending that PUD, but only as it applies to the Health, the Healthplex Campus, this is the thirty-five and a half acre site right here, doesn't address any of the, the PUD that applies outside of the campus. Other than the, the minor amendments that we'll discuss here, no changes to a great majority of that PUD document, and also twenty twenty-five designation for this site is institutional with a very small sliver of commercial, that commercial sliver is, is shown as a parking lot, and no changes required for the twenty twenty-five plan for this expansion. So here's the new site plan, what this features, first off, up here in the northeast, you could see a new parking structure, really excited about being able to improve parking throughout the campus, and also vehicular access and traffic flow throughout the campus with an improved driveway, there's a roundabout that exists right here, that's being improved, and surface parking lots to be able to park not only, you know, the current patients and visitors that come, but also what the expansion is going to need and bring. As far as what's being improved to the building, there's a new, like Laura just said, a new ambulatory care center, a new cancer center, and expansions to the Healthplex, Healthplex Building right in here. Additionally, some of the things that we're addressing in this PUD are improved signage, one of the first things we heard from the hospital when we started discussing this campus was complaints, complaints they receive about signage and about wayfinding in this campus, so we're addressing that in this PUD by additional signage allowances. It's one of the major goals that they have through this request is to improve their ability to help patients and to help guests find the correct entrance, find where, for instance, the emergency center entrances, associated parking lots, and really improve patient experience on this campus. Clicking forward, this is the preliminary plat that is also part of this request. City staff report provides these following quotes, they recognize that this is going to be a benefit to the city by having a single campus for these medical providers and services. The addition of the parking structures we discussed is going to be very helpful with this site and parking the patients and guests and people that come, and finally, there are no negative traffic impacts that are expected with this development. So a quick summary, kind of why we're here again, every, every PUD, as you guys know, is associated with a site plan, and so we're amending the previous two thousand nine site plan for this campus with the new one that's shown there. There's also very minor amendments with height and parking and signage that address that site plan that's proposed here. The parking lot landscaping requirement in two thousand nine was not up to date with the current ordinance, so we've brought that up to date, and one of, if not almost every time we're here in front of you with a PUD, it's because we're talking about uses, no change to allowable uses here, so the same uses that exist today that are allowed today will remain in place. Throughout this process, we, we are not aware of any protests, no one attended the pre-development meeting other than the team members, and Norman Regional has hosted two virtual meetings with Medical Park West property owners in the surrounding area to discuss this plan and moving forward. So as I mentioned, have a large staff here as well to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Any questions of the applicant?
I, I have a couple. Being a former utilities engineer here, I assume the twelve-inch water line that currently exists is going to be rerouted?
I'll hand it over to Terry Haynes with S M C.
And the sewer, same question on the sewer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Daniels, Terry Haynes with S M C Consulting Engineers, eight fifteen West Main, Oklahoma City. Yes, we are relocating, it's a twelve-inch line that currently runs through the campus, adjacent to the existing hospital complex, we're rerouting the twelve-inch around that perimeter road, which you see that's highlighted around the northeast and east side, so the water line will run parallel around the outside of that road. Same thing with the sanitary sewer, the sanitary sewer that runs through the property, again, next to or near the existing hospital complex, it's an existing twelve-inch line, it's laid very flat. We're relocating that around, again, that Ring Road, which is Healthplex Drive. We, because of the, because the site is so flat, and we're also serving adjacent properties to the west as well as the existing hospital complex, we are adding a public sanitary sewer lift station as part of this development. And I've been working with the engineering design group here at the city, the professionals here at the city, in its design, and it will be in compliance, including a SCADA system, which, Mr. Daniels, you're aware of, that will be tied into the city's notification system.
And you'll provide the standard easements that are required for the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
I have a question, probably for you, Gunner, I'm curious why you want to remove the, or if there is one, the no maximum building height, what is the purpose of that, and what are your plans for building height?
Yeah, first off, it's important to note, the, the buildings that are shown are not higher than anything that's existing today, so kind of the intent with that is, in the future, thinking beyond this expansion, there's really nowhere else to go on the site but up, the language that we've taken from is from C two, commercial, so it's in the city's zoning code, there's precedent for that, that verbiage, it's not something we had just made up. But every time you see that, especially in commercial, it's never really a true limitless height, because you always have to be able to provide adequate parking for whatever the use is, so you're going to be restricted with parking. Also, similarly, you have to be able to provide services, utilities to it to support it, and so that always limits height. Additionally, here, you're near the airport across the street, and so that has federal and state requirements that they review buildings, the federal one is if it exceeds fifty-two feet, you have to submit for obstruction evaluation approval, and the state one is if it exceeds a hundred feet. And so those are in place here. And we've obviously requested no variances from those. And so we were just thinking, giving the hospital the ability to expand in the future. And there's already those guidance, guidelines in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question regarding the parking structure. Can you tell me what the change is? Was that in the previous PUD? Or is this a new structure? And describe a little bit more to that. I do, I guess, have some concerns of what that's going to make the frontage of the building look like, especially since that's one of our first buildings and sites that we see when you drive into Norman.
Yeah, first, I'll address the parking and then I'll probably hand it to Jack Joyner to discuss kind of the aesthetics. But the parking structure was contemplated in the two thousand nine PUD. But it basically essentially said, if it's needed at that time, the hospital will come back and develop one. So what we're doing here is finally developing that parking, parking structure. The, one of the signage allowances that are requested is a facade sign on that parking structure to kind of address that concern that you're already talking about is what, what's it going to look like from the highway? And the hospital sees that as a great opportunity for imagery, for signage. And so that's one of the reasons we requested a signage on that parking structure. But Jack, if you want to add any additional comments?
Good evening. Jack Joyner, JHBR Architecture, six hundred Northeast Fourth Street, Oklahoma City. So the parking structure is new to the campus. We don't currently have anything like that. It's all surface parking. So we're currently looking at, I think, it's seven or eight levels of its open-air structure like you've seen around the metro area. We talked about the signage, opportunities to navigate the campus. That obviously is going to be an important piece. Like you said, it'll be the piece up front that people see when they first enter the campus. So we're going to take that opportunity to improve that navigation of the site with this parking structure.
What about the decision to place it in front of? It looks like this is going to be placed in front of the building closer to the Tecumseh, again, where you would see this from the highway and almost mask them of what I consider to be a pretty beautiful building that's been built there. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, I think if you just look at the site, we were very limited on the expansion capabilities. So as we looked at the services that we wanted to provide in the expansion area, what made sense to expand on this site. The building had to, to expand in one direction and really as a resultant of the land that was left over where we could put that parking structure.
Add to that real quickly. There are also, should have led with this, design guidelines that are in place on this property back from two thousand nine that address materials and, and architecture. We've requested no variances from those. So those kind of give a guidance to the aesthetics and the architecture throughout the campus. But also Norman Regional has a vested interest to keep this campus beautiful and aesthetically pleasing. And they've done so with all their other buildings. And so we're pretty confident that they'll continue to do that here. But just wanted to point out those design guidelines are still in place on this campus. I guess the only, oh.
Go ahead.
The only comment I was going to make is obviously if you've been around Chesapeake, you can see what Rand Elliott's done with all his parking structures up there. And I know you guys are every bit as good as Rand. So I expect to see a good-looking parking garage.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I was just wondering if the masonry requirements apply to a parking garage like they do other structures?
I think that the design guidelines have specific materials that are listed out above and beyond even just the city's regular masonry requirement. And so I think this, every, the buildings in this structure fall back to those design guidelines.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to open for audience comments. And planning commission discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And that would be a motion to approve. And I'll take a vote.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Moving on to item ten, miscellaneous comments of planning commissioners and staff. Like to ask if the staff has any information for the commission? And if the commissioners have any comments they'd like to make?
Of course. Speaking of housing and accessible housing, I've been part of the group that, well, we were a while back. And I'm one-tracked. You know, I'm excited about this visibility ordinance that the city is currently chewing on to help encourage builders and developers to build accessible houses. You know, Dan Reeves, who was here a few months ago, he's designing or building specifically a community for parents that have to raise their parents. So senior, not senior housing as much. But he was real positive about making sure that the houses that he builds are accessible. And I've been talking to the people at Ideal Homes. They're excited about this tax credits that could become part of the visibility ordinance. But it seems like more and more builders are seeing the need to build accessible houses. And that makes me excited because we, we need them in Norman. We've got a lot of people that come here, retire here. Norman's a great retirement community. We just need more accessible housing.
Great. Before moving to a German, I'd like to ask if there's anything else to come before the commission? And if not, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Good job.
Thanks.